Call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 5th, 2018, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present. Others include Laura Dogan, our city manager, and James Johnson, our clerk treasurer. The next item is to approve the minutes of October 1st. And I would entertain a motion.
How many motions do we accept in this?
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Made and seconded. Discussion on the minutes?
Motion. I'm picking up money.
Oh, you're picking up money? Oh. Mr. Shenet made the motion, seconded by Mr. Ross. Any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Motion carries. The next item was comments by members of the public. Don't think anyone knew. Okay. Move on. Next item is ambulance budget presentation.
Next slide up here, all right? You guys need copies of the budget? Or did you get them up there?
I gave them a copy of the contract for the budget on the very back page. So that's the material that they have.
You mean this part?
Yep.
That and the big budget we don't need to get into.
We went, I'm sorry, we went through that as a smaller group.
Yeah.
So, and the mayor was there for that.
So, basically, I don't know if I've done this before to you as a group or not, but Jeff Johansson is our new chief operating officer for Newport Ambulance Service.
Yeah, no, Mike's not here.
Mike is still with us until May, and he's retiring after 30 years or whatever. And we've been blaming Jeff for a couple of years now. He's been pretty much doing all of the, he's been pretty much doing all of Mike's works for a while. But, so we're excited to have him. So your contact now will be, and Laura's met him. And he's been in some of the meetings with us. So the contact going forward would be with Jeff. Local boy, lives in town. That's always a good thing, right? So anyways, the, I'll get you up to snuff really quick. I mean, we had a, we had a meeting, and Paul and Laura have already heard this. So I'm gonna give you kind of the shortened version of where we've been at. In the last, since the last time we met for the ambulance and did the contract, a lot has happened. Probably we've been following it in the papers, but I believe in February, well shortly after we met, Derby Line Ambulance, basically, went out business. And I think it was February 1st, I'm not exactly sure, it was some more in February. The town of Derby called us, and we ended up picking up their service. And then shortly after that came half of Charleston, half of Morgan, and Holland. And the reason I say half of Charleston and half of Morgan is because Linden Center, Linden Rescue was doing northern part of Morgan and northern part of Charleston, along with Brighton, Island Pond, the way the EMS districts are scheduled off. So basically, they were doing East Charleston, Morgan from Beach to Island Pond and Island Pond. So we didn't have those. We were just doing from the beach down and basically West Charleston. So we picked them up, and I think West Charleston and Holland was like a month after that because all of their, some of their contracts changed a little bit. So then fast forward a little bit, and then Linden Rescue, contract was coming up in June, and they came in with much higher pricing. And then in the long run, long story short, said they weren't gonna be doing Charleston, Morgan, and Island Pond. So those towns came to us and said, we need a service. So basically, and we picked up the northern part of Charleston and the northern part of Morgan. I think one on June 15th and the other one around July 1st, because all of Linden's contracts ended on a different day, which is why all of ours is January 1st and January 1st, so that doesn't happen. So, and then they gave Brighton, Brighton had a five-year contract with them, but they had a 60-day out. They gave Brighton a 60-day notice that they weren't gonna be keeping up with their contract. So then we got a call from them. And so we went, I don't know if you've read it in the paper, but I mean, it was a long drawn-out thing, and we decided that we were gonna pick up Brighton, too. And how we were gonna do that is affected a little bit by this sheet that you see at the end, it says sub alone. And that sub alone is the substation. And what we're gonna do, we're putting a substation in Morgan, near the Morgan Country Store, just down below. And we are gonna service Charleston, Morgan, Brighton, and Holland from that substation. So the effect of that is, is we took out the cost of operating that substation and a crew at that substation, and put them on their own budget so that it didn't affect the Coventry, Newport City, Newport Town, and Derby, because we had already put those together. And we have already contracted with, I think all of them are pretty close, for January 1st. They're gonna be on the same schedule, January 1st to January 1st with us. As a result of that, we took a percentage of our administration budget, which would be Jeff, billing, any of our expenses that are related to handling the substation, and put those expenses, moved them over from, from the, where it says NAS is Newport Ambulance Service, that's basically the Coventry, Newport City, Newport Town, and Derby. So we took expenses from there and moved them over, which brought our expenses down. So the net effect for that is that you guys are getting a better price, even though it's gone an increase, I'll explain that. What we've done in that time is we bought a new ambulance, we've hired seven additional full-time people, six per diem, which are part-time. We have two crews now, 24/7 at all times at the Newport Bay. We have a third crew that's gonna be, when we get all set up, is gonna be handling Morgan, still is now, that area, but we're not, we're still running from Newport at this point, so we have three crews on. We've lowered the number of list assists, calls to local fire departments, because we have more people. And when we have more people, if they're not busy, they're busy. Something comes in, off they go. We have not dropped a call, and this is some of the stuff we talked about last year, mutual aid and not being able to pick it up, and if we're out of town, who picks us up and all that? We haven't dropped a call since July. And the reason is, we have the numbers, we have the crews there. And we've responded to 2,071 calls this year as of this morning, which is a huge number.
That's not just Newport, right?
That's just Newport. Jeff does have Newport's numbers. There are over 1,000.
Not over 1,000.
For that, for that area. The, and that result of this is, what I'm trying to tell you, I guess, is we, so we have more people, we have more crews on, so everybody has benefited out of this. The towns on the, those other four towns that we picked up, they benefited because they now have 24/7 coverage and a crew on. Where before, even with Linden Rescue, they had just a daytime crew, and then it was on-call crews after that. We told them we weren't interested in doing that. We'd run a volunteer service before, doesn't work. That's why everybody's pulling help. A short time later, Barton went out, I guess you guys are all aware of that. We did not want to take over the southern part of the state because a mutual aid problem would exist at that point. So we had been working, especially Jeff, with Orleans, to help them consolidate all their funds. We've given them our scheduling information, our billing software. We sat down with them and said, this is how you need to approach it, so that they're strong, so that we're not running down and doing their calls. And they've picked it up, and they're doing a really wonderful job, too. Part of the reason by putting the substation in Morgan is because when Linden Rescue went out, you now had, if Island Pond, they were looking to contract with 45th Paragon, I don't even know if you guys have ever heard of them, but it's out of Pittsburgh, New Hampshire, so Cold Brook, between Cold Brook and Pittsburgh. And they were gonna be coming down, and I said, well, that's an awful long race for mutual aid for Newport if we needed mutual aid on that side. So we decided, we're not, we're not gonna have mutual aid, so that's why we put the extra crew on, so cover it. We never have less than two crews available in Newport. We would not pull, we would not leave Newport with one and pull two crews on in the other direction. It just hasn't happened. We'll call another crew in. I'll give you, for instance, we had a accident.
Newport Center?
Tuesday?
Thursday.
Thursday? Thursday, last Thursday. Just happened we were meeting in Newport Center that night. We had, we had five crews, correct?
Yeah. We stopped five trucks that day.
The only reason we could do that, because we had four trucks in Newport. We had a fifth truck from their Johnson branch that had just been fixed at Hayes Ford. And so it was sitting there waiting for them to come pick it up from Johnson.
So you sent, had sent five ambulances?
So we sent five ambulances. But that's because we have the crew now. We have the, we have the paid crew, we have the on-call people that we can call in. And that's something we couldn't have done in here. So, so I think it's a win-win all the way around. If you remember, you guys might not, but I do, last year, when we came to you originally, I mean, we were looking for, you know, we wanted $185,000 from you, you all had a heart attack. I was a little worried whether I was gonna make it out of the building or not. And then we said, the absolute least we can do it for is 146. And then somehow or another, you guys talked us into 132. So that's where we ended up. With the understanding that we would probably come back to you every year for a 10% increase for the next three years to get us up to the higher amount. So we could pay our people, give them a dollar, raise an hour, get our people up to where they work, because our people frankly were, had been underpaid for a long time. We plan on doing that again this year, and at this point, we're gonna have all of them above $15 an hour, which at some point might be the minimum, and these people work really hard for what they do, it's a tough job. On top of that, we give them medical, we give them a pension, so, I mean, we treat our people pretty good, we pay all their costs. So that's built into the, this new budget. And it's, so instead of the 10% increase, we're coming in asking you for, so I think it's 2.9%. Still below the figure that I told you the absolute least we could do it for last year, by about $10,000. So, and the good thing about that is, last year, when we were at the 132, we were gonna be working on a shoe string, finding cats everywhere. And we're actually having a pretty good year, and we've been able to buy new equipment, we've been able to give our people raises, and a lot of that, the more towns that you have, the more call volume that you do, and I think I had this conversation with everybody, gives us, we generate more income. But we only had to add that the crew that we added wasn't, I mean, it more than pays for it. If you had to put a crew in Island Pond, for instance, which is what they wanted us to do, you gotta hire 12 people just for there, to cover somebody 24/7. We didn't have to do that. If that, if that office isn't busy in Morgan, and we have an ambulance out on a 911, and we've got a transfer that's going out or something, that, we'll call some people in, but if they get called out, we shift somebody over to them so that they're covered, and then we bring our on-call people right back into Newport. So that's how we're, how we're making it work, so that we don't have to be. It's working great. We have, we have probably the first time ever that we have enough crew, so we're not, you know, lacking people. And we're not relying on any mutual aid whatsoever. So that's my spiel. We're asking for 137, 105.
136, 155. Not Derby's. You have Derby's at 137.
No, excuse me. No, I want more from you. No. 136, you're right. 136, 155. And you can see, that, that increase is not, it's not quite $4,000. We were gonna be coming back with 10% for three years. From, if we continue to have the years that we're having now, you know, this, I would expect what we're asking now is from more of the norm than we're now.
Great. Questions from council members? Mr. Shenet?
Charlie, in that first column, down column?
Yeah.
Where you've got Charleston on down?
Yeah.
Are those figures prior to the complete takeover from Linden Rescue?
Yes. Well, some, some, some iron, some iron. The Morgan, yeah, like the $42,000 from Brighton, was we contracted with them just from August 1st until January 31st to go from Newport, because the substation wouldn't be up yet. And we told them it was, it was 21 weeks, it's $2,000 a week.
Okay, so on the Morgan line, that would have been at the time when you were covering from the beach west to Newport?
Yes, the 11,000. Yeah. We ended up, we ended up doubling.
Okay.
So it was 22 when they, except it really wasn't, because it wasn't until August. So we prorated their second fortune. Yeah, those were the figures that they were paying in the old contract, with the exception of Brighton.
Okay, so that was the beach west, and then 28.7 is with?
All of Morgan.
All of Morgan.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so they went from basically 11, and then, because their, their population was about split, the way it worked out, so it went from 11 to 22 a year, and then with our increase. Their, their substation is increasing substantially more, if you look at their figures, but that's because we're building a building there, they're getting a lot better service than they've ever had.
Have you started?
We, the wheels turn slow. We have a contractor, we've agreed to a plan, he's waiting for, I don't know if it's active, permitting and stuff like that.
Permitting, okay.
So it'll happen as soon as they can make it happen. And we don't have any control over that.
So for now?
We're coming from Newport.
You are still coming from Newport?
Yeah. In the summer, when it was nice, we actually stationed a crew out there.
Just kinda parked the ambulance?
Yeah, I had it downtown garage from down by the beach.
Oh, by the beach? Oh, no wonder!
They're all, we didn't have any trouble filling those slots. They couldn't have their swim trunks.
No, that wouldn't look good going to a park.
But we wanted to do that just to get a feel, it was a really good test run for us, to get a feel for what it's gonna be like if we're, if we're in there. And we worked everything out. We've had the, the crews, while they were on there, went out and actually drove the streets to know where the towns are and all that kind of stuff. Because when we get, and I will say this one, when we get dispatched from Newport, dispatch, for you guys, is what we pay for. They're amazing. I just gotta tell you upfront, they're, they're wonderful. They map, and Jeff can tell you better about it, but they'll, they'll bring the call in, they'll map it, they even tell you the caller of the house sometimes, right, where are you going? And we don't get that from those people. So it's, it's a big difference. I told Laura and Seth, if you ever wanna, need a letter of recommendation from us, but it's one of the best money that you guys are spending for safety, if you say sometimes.
Under section 6.5, page 3.
Well, that's the contract.
For grants. How successful are you in setting the grants for the service?
Yeah, well, we've got, I dropped that, I had that down here, and I skipped by it. We've got a $50,000 grant and an $83,000 loan from USDA this year for Zoll monitors. That was huge for us. And Zoll monitors are the machines that, Jeff can, why don't you explain it here?
So the Zoll monitors, it's the cardiac monitors, they can defib, they can pace your heart, you can see your whole cardiac rhythm, that's the machine that someone's having chest pain, you know, can tell if you're having a big heart attack. They're about $36,000 apiece, and we were very lucky to obtain six of them from the USDA of the loan.
Over, over the years, it's been kind of sporadic, but I think now that some of the impetus is on the Northeast Kingdom, we're gonna continue, I mean, we apply for every grant, no matter.
We have local businesses also that are really big, Columbia Forest Products, every year gives us a safety grant. They ask us for a piece of equipment that needs to be replaced, or, so every year, they've been buying us a pediatric car seat. They're $1,000. It fits a child from two pounds up to 99 pounds, you know, and it's the only approved one to fit on a ambulance cot. And Columbia's Forest Products, who've been very fortunate over the last three years, has purchased one for us.
And that $50,000 was a grant from somewhere?
USDA.
That was also USDA, along with the $83,000 all alone?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Questions from council members? Then the vote would have been to approve the contract, correct?
You would put it in your budget?
Put it in the budget.
There is one thing.
There is one other, yeah.
Yeah. Do you wanna do it?
No, go ahead. I've been talking all day, I've had four meetings.
Is this about the fiscal year?
Yeah.
The schedule of payment. So it used to be, in our, in the current contract, we would make, I think, it was either four or six payments, and the payments would start July 1st through December 31st. And this contract changes that. It, it's not a substantive change for us, and it meets both of our needs, which would be that it requires one payment in full during the month of July. And I'm, I'm happy with that myself, because it means we don't have to adjust our fiscal year to meet their calendar year. This meets both our needs.
Yeah, and part of the discussion there was, initially, our council said, can you get monthly payments from these towns? Because our cash flow, we have a line of credit, and so, like, we're running from January to July on our calendar year and not getting anybody in. And so there, she, you know, I was scratching her head, where to get the funds from, and she says, can you do that? And I said, well, we can go and talk to them. And so that, instead of doing a monthly payment, was brought up, well, what if, what if we just gave you the whole thing in July? So that'd be great, because most of the communities, as we found out, are January to January, and they'll give us monthly. So we'll get all of our money in a whole lot quicker, because as a board member, we have our monthly meetings, and the way it is now, until November, we're in a hole. And it's always, you know, and sometimes we have to borrow money from our credit line and.
How long's it take you to get reimbursed? Say you transport, and it goes, like, say, to my insurance, or how does that work?
Three to six weeks.
Three to six weeks? I'm just.
Depends.
Depends, okay.
And depending that we, everything is coded properly. We have a very good billing service, and that helps.
That helps, okay.
And if they kick it back, then we fight it again. I mean, we, we fight it a lot. Because they kick it back a lot, especially Medicare.
Medicare, okay. All right. Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to include the ambulance in our budget, because I think the increase is well reasonable, very reasonable, considering you, you had said you were gonna come in at 10% every year. 2.9% is.
Figured you guys would be dancing on the table.
And it would also be to have signed the contract?
We signed the contract just before December, I think.
Oh, okay, then we'll just.
But you authorized signature.
You can authorize it, you can sign it whenever you want, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it would be to include in that budget that the signed the contract?
Yeah. You could actually, you could authorize me, or you could sign it.
And so we need a motion to that effect?
Well, make a motion that we include the amount of the contract in the budget, and then we authorize the city manager to sign it.
Motion's made?
A second.
Made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Hallelujah. It's a whole lot easier than last year, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you, folks.
Mr. Mayor, when does the contract start again? I'm sorry. And what does that do to the tax rate?
Starts, the contract starts January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2019. And we won't know the overall tax rate, because we're putting our budget together now, so I don't know what the total is, but we will incorporate this in our budget. So I'll be, I mean, if you come to the meetings, our budget meetings are actually gonna start this month. So we'll know more. Usually takes anywhere from six weeks or so, historically, to go through our budget process. So I'll know more after that.
I'd like to have a copy of the paperwork that Mr. Thomas gave you.
I have notes all of mine.
We have a budget and.
Yeah.
You can get it here.
Oh, great.
Do you have an extra copy besides that? We have five copies. I don't need any more than three.
All right, moving on, the next item, Veterans Day request for waived fees. VFW commander. We have Jess who's here also, who sent us a memo regarding the fees, and their recommendation is to include it as part of the rec.
Our schedule of events.
Schedule of events. So there would be no fees for parade or the ceremony downstairs.
Yeah, for the Memorial Day, St. Louis Veterans Day.
Questions from council members on this, before I entertain a motion?
I wonder if, I didn't look at the attachments online with the agenda today, I don't know if this was included so that people had a chance to look at it.
I don't remember if we put it on.
Would you mind if I read it, so that people know what we're talking about? Or do you wanna read it?
If you wanna read it.
Sure. So it's a memo from city manager and Ms. Booth. And it says, "In early October, the Parks and Rec office received a call from VFW Post 798 to coordinate the annual Veterans Day ceremony in the Newport Minnesville gym on Friday, November 9th. The event is not hosted by Newport Parks and Rec and is therefore considered a third-party event. As we continue to perfect the third-party event policy and its appropriate sketch of application, we recommend that the annual Veterans Day and Memorial Day ceremonies be included in our event schedule for Parks and Rec. It is a meaningful civic gesture to our community to partner with the American Legion and VFW to host these events as part of our regular schedule." It is a meaningful civic gesture, that's my point. I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea.
Other comments or questions from anyone? Then we would need a motion.
So moved?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any other discussion on this? I think it's great that we're including it, because we've probably had the Veterans Day ceremony downstairs for at least 50 years or longer, and the Memorial Day Parade has been going on for many, many years too, which is an annual civic event that we should waive any type of fee for those things, because it is our civic duty. And so with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, has the city been charging the organizations up until now, or have they always been waived?
They were waived last year, and then before the, when the event policy was put in, they were waived then. But we, but as far as when it comes to, I consider this like a policy, because if you look at our coin drop policy, the fire department, the rec department have priority, and then the veterans groups, as far as the coin drop policy. So I consider this just a policy for the use of our facilities for the VFW and the Legion when it comes to Veterans Day and Memorial Day.
So they don't need, they don't need to come every...
They won't have to come every year.
Yeah.
Which I think is proper. They don't have to come anymore. Because we're all sitting here because of them, the way I look at it. All right.
The only thing they would have to do though is notify the city how much days they want to have in their head.
Right, just, right, that's all they would have to do is notify, you know, because Veterans Day changes and Memorial Day, and so, yeah, they would just have to notify the city as far as the events. We didn't vote yet, did we? Not yet, okay.
No, just some housekeeping. So is Veterans Day on Veterans Day in Newport?
Not this, no. I'll let Mr. Young speak.
So, Mr. Young, the commander from VFW over here. This year, Veterans Day falls on Sunday. We're gonna have problems with the JRC. They come, as everybody knows. These kids do a lot of stuff for us. We had a hard time with some of the bands and stuff like that. So this year, we did it on Friday, so that way the kids can actually all make it there and participate in the events and to get speakers. Unfortunately, now the band can't be here, so we're still looking for more speakers and stuff like that, because they're gone to Disney World and stuff. So this year, we're doing it on the 9th. Last year, we did it on the Monday. So it really depends on how it falls on the calendar and where it falls, is how we try to plan it. We try to plan it the best for everybody to make it there.
Sure. Anything else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is the Newport City Promise Community Board of Directors update. I have Colleen Moore-Dotez.
I don't know what we're gonna run into with this, Colleen.
Hopefully we don't run into anything.
I don't know how to use this computer. Um, you know, I can't, I don't even know if it should come up, sorry.
That's okay.
It should come up.
The monitors are waking up.
You wanna turn that off?
Should we turn this one off?
Yeah, you can put this right here. Okay. That's the, you want it to be on show. There you go.
That'll do.
Okay. All right, I gotta turn it towards you. Perfect. Thank you. All I need is access to the space bar.
So thank you very much for putting me on the agenda tonight to represent the Newport City Promise Community Early Care and Learning Center. We are very excited and want to express our appreciation to city council for council member Ribbolling and Mayor Minette and Laura Dolgan, the city manager, for attending our ribbon-cutting ceremony this afternoon and touring our classrooms and enjoying some conversation with community members and some families that attend our program. Oh my gosh, it fades in and out. So research and experience show that families do better when they live in strong and supportive communities. In short, place matters. Yet many communities face challenges of high poverty, unemployment, failing schools, and housing instability. Here in Newport, we have a 41% rate of child poverty in our downtown neighborhoods. That's almost half of our children in this community. Our children, our kindergarten readiness scores, which actually was one of the measures to apply for this grant process, which came under the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant, which was rolled out as education legislation under the Obama administration. The state of Vermont applied for and won this funding in 2014, and after that, communities had to apply for funding for promised communities. One of the, many of the measures that we had to show was, what is our childhood poverty rate? How ready are our children for kindergarten? There is a 10 percentage point difference between children who attend a public prepaid or other high-quality education program and children who do not in their kindergarten readiness scores. Children who attend a high-quality program are 80, around 82% prepared for kindergarten, and then among the population of children who do not attend, that number is 72%. Third grade reading levels is another benchmark, which I don't have that information available. But we do have 90% of the families in Orleans County who are likely to need care for infants and toddlers do not have any access to, do not have access to any regulated care at all. That number goes a little bit lower. Sorry, sorry, that's not true. I apologize, I misspoke. 90% of families don't have access to high-quality care for infants and toddlers in Orleans County, and that number decreases to 72% of families might not have access to any licensed care whatsoever in our community. So, the Promise Community Initiative is what we call a place-based initiative, and it is a federal program that supports community-driven, place-based efforts to improve educational and developmental outcomes for children in distressed communities. Our community is very distressed, as we all know and have seen over time. One of the really amazing things about the Promise Community Initiative is that it recognizes that communities themselves have a responsibility and unique capacity to work together to improve outcomes for children and families. We were selected and we created a innovative plan, or so we thought, and we did this through some grassroots organizing and community conversations. We held a number of community cafes, one of which was rooted in our very own Community Commons, which has been an institution in Newport City for quite a few years now, which is a circle, nonjudgmental way to have conversations. And I know many of our municipal leaders have participated in those leading up to now. And so the themes that emerged from these community conversations really revolved around childcare and people's ability to access not just quality childcare, but their ability to afford that, right? So how do we create a model? So we heard that, and we said, hey, let's start a childcare. Let's start a five-star, NACI-accredited childcare. And so I wanted to show this drawing, because it really, this came out of one of the workshops. This was a two-year process. This was a real pain in the ass. But this illustration came out of one of our brainstorming activities. We had a number of representatives from different sectors come together to like, kind of draw, what are the most important things in your community and how are they connected? And you can see that childcare is right in there with town plan and business community and municipal planning, and all of those things kind of wrap up in to build what we feel is community capacity. And so what is community capacity? It's when people in a community feel a sense of shared responsibility and apply their collective strengths to achieve the desired results. Individuals in high-capacity communities get support when they need it, and in turn, contribute back to the life of the community. The goal of community capacity building, and you can see our beautiful illustration, I don't wanna brag, but I did draw that right there a little more clearly. The goal of building community capacity, which is one of the goals of the Promise Community Grants, is that formal systems such as municipalities, schools, systems of care, work together with informal networks, which would be community activist troops, or watershed associations, or just other people who get together informally. And that might be our family support, right? So who do we turn to for help immediately? We turn to family. And so those are our informal networks of support in our communities, right? And faith communities have been long a part of that, like straddling that boundary between a formal network, because it's God after all, and informal, right? Being a place where you feel spiritually safe. So, communities with high capacity have characteristics that increase interactions and connection between people. They have high collective competence, which is a sense that together, we can make good things happen. And again, community members get support when they need it, and then they are able to contribute to the life of the community in return. They give back. And so some examples of this that are already taking place in our community. Our Newport City Elementary School, Safe Roots to School, we have monthly walks to school. That's an opportunity where we have community members and municipal leaders and other community partners, such as Green Mountain Front to School, get together and we have a walk to school. We do that once a month. The Third Street Hood Chat was on the previous slide, and that rose out of a petition that was circulated around town, because people living on Third Street had really had enough of visible, obvious, blatant, openly open drug use in their communities in front of their children. And so they got together, and that group now is meeting monthly. Recently had a Third Street costume party, where members of the community came together and dressed up. You can see Mr. Maryam is there, dressed as a chicken, Ms. Rossi, and other community partners. It was a really lovely day. And so that's another example of opportunities where we have to be more connected. The Newport City Wireless Mesh Project, this is undertaken by an active community member named Diane Field, the 99 Gallery, who has worked tirelessly to bring this project to fruition. And this is to provide low-cost, high-speed internet to a very small geographic region of downtown Newport, which happens to be the same geographic space that the childcare is located in. And the church that the childcare is located in is also hosting the fiber optic cable that then broadcasts the wireless signal up and down the street to routers. We have so many community resources. We have our recovery center, we now have our childcare, the Center for the Arts, the community garden, the Orleans County Restorative Justice Center. And so there are so many amazing things going on in our community that the Newport City Promise Community is a part of bringing forward. And so when we talk about community capacity building further, it is actually a very strong protective factor against substance misuse disorder. And as we were just discussing, that has had a devastating impact on our community as well as every other community in the state of Vermont. Adverse childhood experiences are one of the root causes of substance misuse disorder. It creates changes in a child's brain that make them adapt to a very dangerous world and exhibit behaviors that we don't always associate with civic, good manners, all of those things. And so we would make the case that childcare, just like roads and bridges, is an important part of infrastructure for economic development, that the return on this investment is between $7 and $9 on every dollar invested in early childhood. And that's a pretty powerful protective factor. Another tool that municipalities can utilize to support childcare and families in their communities is the municipal plan. What is a plan? It's a guide for accomplishing community aspirations and intentions, often through public investments, land use regulations, and other implementation programs. Our city plan in Newport City is up for rewriting really soon. So, this is, these are very detailed. There are some required elements of a municipal plan, and there are the goals, planning goals for municipalities. One of those, as you can see, at 3:15 o'clock, is available childcare. These, this is some language. There are other towns in Vermont who have incorporated childcare and access to childcare and actually supporting childcare into their city plans. And I have some sample language picked up here from the Greensboro Town Plan, "To support philosophically and financially, Four Seasons of Early Learning, Wonder and Wisdom, the Four Winds Nature Institute, and other educational programs." So I'm gonna skip through those, because it's, those are very, very detailed. But the Newport City Promise Community Early Care and Learning Center is currently ready to serve 22 children with high quality. We're seeking five-star status, which is the highest quality rating in the state of Vermont that we can get. We are also seeking NACI accreditation, which is the National Association for the Education of Young Children, and that also is another benchmark for quality. We're open Monday through Friday, 7 to 5, full day, full year, preschool. And we would ask, on behalf of the Board of Directors, as well as the Third Street Hood Chat Group, kindly and respectfully, that the city council consider allocating $20,000 annually as an appropriation to the Newport City Promise Community Scholarship Fund, and be a leader and show how we value children in our community and families. And we would be happy for the council to consider this at a later time, but to be thoughtful. And thank you very kindly for your attention during this presentation. I wonder if the council has any questions?
Questions from council members? I think I asked you, is the scholarship a Newport City residence?
It would be available to any child who attended the childcare.
Okay. And then we were chatting earlier, you mentioned the Sherman Fund. Well, the Sherman Fund was set up so good for Newport City residents. And so that was set up years ago for, had people who graduate from high school from what I received at 40 years ago, the Sherman Fund. So that's why I was asking, because you're asking for us to allocate taxpayer money where if it's children, not against children, but if it's children coming from Derby, maybe you should also go to the town of Derby and ask for an appropriation too. That's just my thought process, because I think it shares, shares the taxpayers' monies. Because if it's just Newport City, some taxpayers might see it as we're subsidizing people from Derby who already have a dollar per whatever, less tax rate. So you might wanna go, like, the ambulance goes to all the towns, because they provide a service in all the towns, but if we're providing, not we, but you're, you're providing a service, which, I took a tour of the facility, it's great, looks great starting up, and I think it would be, it would be appropriate to go to the other communities also, instead of just the Newport City taxpayers.
That's an excellent suggestion, thank you. I would hope that Newport would feel comfortable leading the way for other communities in our region and showing them as an example that we are all in this together.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Is there any reason why the board couldn't limit any Newport City allocation to Newport City children for a scholarship?
I think the board has felt in the past that it's really a question of human dignity, that all families that are, are high-quality childcare, that we wouldn't be walking the walk of the philosophy of this center if we limited scholarships to only children from Newport City.
And is this, oops, sorry, I just, thing popped in my mind here. This is run through the United Church?
The program is housed in the church.
Housed. Who actually runs the program? Because my thought process is taxpayers' money going to a religious facility, because there is certain stipulations on that aspect. So that's why I just asked the question of who actually handles, I guess, the finances and running the program? Is it the church, or is it your own group?
We have a memorandum of understanding with the church currently, and that is for annual renewal, and so that will be coming up. So currently, all business is done under the, what is it called, Employee Identification Number, EIN?
Oh, their federal EIN number.
Of the United Church. So that is the fiscal agent, but they are not the childcare. I don't know if that makes any sense.
Okay, that's something I think would have to be clarified, because taxpayers' money to a religious institution... because taxpayers' money to a religious institution, there's laws about that. And so we'd have to have that clarified before we move forward on that aspect. No, this is for the council right now, Anne, I'm sorry. Maybe if we get all the questions here, I might. Let's see, other questions from anybody?
Well, to further what you were saying earlier, do you have any idea where all of these children would be coming from? Which area? Would it be strictly Orleans County or beyond?
Well, not many people commute here from other places. But if there was a family that required, like, was commuting to here to work with a child from, I'm having trouble imagining that, that's all. So, we would not exclude somebody from outside of Orleans County, but I would imagine that the circumstances would have to be pretty extraordinary for somebody to need childcare.
Basically, you're just talking about local towns in and around. And to further what the mayor was saying, would you be going to all those towns to pitch this to them as well?
I would love to incorporate that into our board's strategic plan.
And your $20,000 is what you're looking for for funds?
From Newport City as an annual allocation.
Only from Newport City? So you'd be looking for what type of funds from Orleans? Which, what type of funds would you wanna get from Newport Center?
Well, that is again something I would have to discuss with the other members of the board to really hash that out as a, like, strategic plan.
So you have no idea really how much you would need for operating expenses?
Well, yes, but that's not my area of expertise. And so this would not be for operating expenses. This would be to support children who cannot pay for quality childcare. So the cost of paying for quality is, what we charge to break even would be $250 a week. But the state does not reimburse the full cost of that, even if a family is poor enough to receive childcare subsidy. And so there would be a gap in between what the state pays and what our rates are, which we must charge to achieve quality and to break even. So that gap is what the scholarship fund would go to support children accessing. So for example, yeah, I think that was a good example, so I'm not gonna go anymore.
Do you work under the umbrella of a state agency? Or are you going to be a nonprofit?
Again, that discussion around independence from the church, because the Promise Community Grant actually ends on December 31st. And at that time, we are ongoing having discussions about what our structure could potentially look like for the future. We would be happy to partner with other community agencies, but it's not being operated under the umbrella of a community agency or other nonprofit. But we look to collaborate really strongly with many of them. And we're already collaborating with the Justice Center at the Third Street Hood Chats. The childcare provides childcare for those meetings. The staff provided childcare at the police forum on August 30th as well.
So I went online to, you know, look what that is. And I don't know if it's a state agency provides guidelines and stuff. So whose guidelines are you painting up to perform your services?
To measure quality. So childcares are governed by the Child Development Division, and they issue very detailed guidelines, like education standards that we have to meet to provide quality and to be licensed or open.
Other questions from council members?
I mean, this is wonderful. I see this need every day, so.
No, I don't disagree. I just think the funding needs to be a bigger, a bigger area than just Newport. Because as we all know, we have residents in Newport who are struggling to even stay in their homes. I won't say the gentleman's name, but he comes in with his walker once a month to pay his, so he doesn't get kicked out of his house. And so I just, we gotta, if this is scholarships for children, say from Derby, I think Derby should help put money in towards it. That's my big thing. Because for years Newport has subsidized many things in the county. So we have stepped forward over the years, but it's come to the point that the other communities, as I always say, need to step up to the plate and also have a piece of the pie.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if each and every member of this council, if they believe in this, would also reach out to your networks and other select board members in the other towns and make a case for this?
Personally, I think it should be your group because you're the knowledge of it. You have the knowledge to present it. I don't have all the detailed knowledge. I mean, I can reach out to them, but I wouldn't be able to answer questions and, you know, this.
I'd be happy if you referred them to me.
Another question I have is what about the state of Vermont? They truly need to stop funding things like this. That's, you know, we have the infamous cycle of the bench passing the buck to the state. The state passes the buck to the municipalities, and then they're kinda out, you know, they're kinda out of the hands, like, what do we do?
So again, I would recommend very strongly for every member of this council, including you, Mr. Mayor, to advocate on a state level that childcare be valued because currently you would have to own two slaves in order to run a childcare at a profit. Those two people working for free. And that is what the state of Vermont, that is the example the state of Vermont is setting for us by not reimbursing childcare and not valuing it. And so you have an opportunity here to be a leader, to be a pioneer, and to exert pressure. I know that Newport is on the radar of the state of Vermont because you know why we had the unfortunate EV5 incident? And I would say that there are a number of forces in the state that might wanna see Newport succeed at this time. And additionally, that gives you, sir, a good deal more influence in the rest of the state. And so if you would have those conversations with people in high places and say, "Hey, this is what we're seeing in Newport. What's going on in your town? And this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna value caring across the lifespan, and we're gonna value childcare."
Anything else from anyone?
I read online about this Promise Community. I thought it was more overarching than just childcare. It was about...
It is a big-picture thing. Each community was allowed to have these community cafes and identify what they felt would benefit them the most. And so each community around the state looks very different. We have communities in St. Johnsbury, Linenville, Eden. Troy is another great example where they've chosen to enhance their physical activity opportunities and their community garden with those funds.
All right, anything else from council members? That is something that we'll just have to take our advisement and discuss it when it comes to budgeting?
I very much appreciate the opportunity to present this tonight. And there may not, some are here, Savannah is here, people who were on the original committee. But yeah, it's been a long journey, and thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Don't know how to eject that USB. Thank you.
Probably wanna close the PowerPoint first.
Don't tell the computer that.
No, the newer ones don't have such a bit like the old one.
Also, great times to be...
The next item will be event debrief. Mrs. Jess?
I'm just gonna turn the floor right over to Savannah from Posporo Cause. So these guys had an event, the Domestic Abuse Awareness Event in October. So she's here to debrief that event and let us know how things went.
Good evening. Okay. So, as you know, this year it was the second annual Posporo Cause event. And unfortunately, we had some ups and downs. So we did reach our fundraising goal through sponsorship that we had mentioned when I was here the last time, which was really fantastic because it was something that we didn't try the year before. So that was pretty exciting to reach our goal. However, our actual attendance was much lower than the previous year, so that was a little heartbreaking. So going back and having a conversation with our director, we haven't officially had a time to meet together as a staff yet. And so once we're able to do that, we're going to see what our next steps are going to be for next year. If it's something that we're going to try again or if we're just gonna try some other way of outreach for this particular issue. It was still really fantastic. I don't know if you remember when I came, the first year, I talked about the teenager who had kinda implemented this idea in my head here. She was able to attend again this year. So that was just really great to have her come back and see that we were able to take her idea to the next step and go to the sponsorship level, sorry, that we weren't able to do the first year. So we'll see. I mean, it was still a little idea. I was really, really hoping that it would turn into something bigger like some of the other walks that we do in our community. Unfortunately, domestic violence still is considered that taboo issue. It's not really talked about a lot in bigger forums, but it's not going to stop us, and we'll figure out what we're gonna do next year. But thank you for the donation, and we'll definitely keep you all posted on what our next ideas will be. But we're still here.
You went from the gazebo, like, Palm Berne stand.
Yep, and we... On the bike path. And so we walked through, like, the Proudy Beach area and down by the Legion, and then we turned around and came back. And that day, we had it a little earlier this year because we were afraid about the weather, which was really great because October wasn't the greatest with weather. But it ended up being like 80, so that was a little ridiculous. We had it in the morning, which was really great, but by the time we were coming back, the dogs were definitely getting hot. So we were like, okay, we need to figure out this whole weather thing. But of course, we live in Vermont, so that's probably not going to happen.
Right, we went from summer to winter without fall.
I know, exactly. So a part of it was like, all right, so October was crappy with the weather, but then again, like, the 80 degrees, not so great for, like, a walk, especially with pets. But the owners that did show up, the people who participated, were pretty fantastic, and, you know, we all did it, and it was really great. So we, not including umbrella staff, we had about 12, 10 to 12 walkers. So that was pretty great. And the year before, we had over 25. So, still small, but it was still a great day. And it was really great because we correlated with the farmer's market, like, the farmer's market was there, and we also had vendors that set up. So it was a nice flow of people that were coming in and looking at the vendors, which was really nice and helpful. So even if we didn't have people that participated in the actual walk, they definitely were getting information, like, other community members were coming over to check it out and asking questions. And we even had a couple of people that had showed up that donated right there on the spot, so that was pretty nice, too.
Good. Questions from Mrs. Shannon?
The weather was okay that day, I guess, but are you gonna consider maybe moving the day closer toward the summer? So you have better weather, so you don't have to deal with our fall weather?
So originally, the reason why we had it in October was October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so we were trying to correlate with that. But if it is something that we had even talked about before, possibly having it in the spring, so we can get kind of like the nicer weather where it's not completely hot. So we'll see. We're still trying to figure that out, and that will be a conversation that's on the table. But we'll see, yeah. Part of me is not ready to let it go yet, just because it's my baby, but we'll just have to wait and see what we decide as an organization, what we're gonna do next.
Any other questions from anyone? Thank you for coming.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. You too.
Any others? That was the only one?
That's all the line for tonight. We potentially have two coming for the next meeting.
Two, okay. All right, we'll move on. Audit, fund balances, assignments, discussion, and vote. And I'll let the city manager go through.
Well, we've been working with our auditor for several months, and this is the point at which we're prepared for the annual assignments. And I wanted to, I brought in the last couple of audits. This is what they're about to build. And we need a vote tonight on whatever those amounts might be so that they can publish this. Most of this is reflected on page three in those statements. So I've generated a chart for you so you can see what some of those amounts are. This column, the very top lines where it says restricted, those are the two funds that are restricted by the funder. One is the Walmart Funds, one is the Centennial Celebration. You will see that they are measuring balances as of 6/30/2018. So what we're looking to commit, which is a specific purpose by the council, are the columns that start with surplus for future budget offset and that go all the way down to dispatch equipment. And you will see that we are proposing $200,000 be set aside to spread over future years to offset the budget. And that's always a dangerous proposition because we don't wanna set false expectations. Those funds derive from the police grants. And you'll recall that we receive on an annual basis about $196,000 from the SIU funds as well as the Joint Task Force. Those funds are not guaranteed. So what we did last year is we budgeted them in our operating expenses, and we didn't include them in revenue. So when the budget, when the grants came in, we have an opportunity to return those operating expenses back to the taxpayer. So that's what that $200,000 represents. The rest of them are, it's easy for me to say it's automatic. The Coventry Sinking Fund is something that has been in existence for a number of years. That's the amount, and we wanna make sure we don't lose those. So we're generating what's called a sinking fund. The Tennis Court Sinking Fund, and I'm drawing your attention to the balances under 6/30/18. The reappraisal, again, we don't wanna lose these funds. These are the balances as of the end of the fiscal year in 2018, so let's not lose those. From the fire station renovation down to the bottom of dispatch equipment, these are funds that are either already designated as sinking funds or funds that are left over in our operating budget. And again, we do not wanna lose out on utilizing these funds. The $25,000, you've already committed that when you changed it from the floor to the roof. The fire department has another 2,500 unspent. We'd like to save those and commit those to new communications equipment. The gateway maintenance floor, that happened. And you have an amount from, is it this year's budget or this current budget? I believe it's this budget. So you'll need to pull over that $8,000 from the fiscal year that ended in 2018 and match it to the funds that are in there for this year so you can pay that bill. Then the public works, whatever you've designated for public works that was unspent by statute needs to be carried over into this current fiscal year. So the numbers where it starts with street repair, street repairs and maintenance, right down through street reconstruction, those are funds that are unspent that we wanna carry over into this current budget since we've already started the paving work that's gonna be paid for in there. The dispatch equipment is new. The dispatch equipment are revenues that we received. In FY18, we are allowed to use those for a sinking fund for future dispatch maintenance and repair. And we're encouraging the council to take that position because going forward, any funds that are recouped through the contracts that Seth is recruiting will have to go into offset for personnel. So this is sort of a one-shot opportunity unless we set aside sinking funds in the future. unless we set aside sinking funds in the future for dispatch. So, those are the areas that we would ask the council to commit. We don't have anything to assign this year. Last year, we had assigned the seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and we used that on the successful clerks renovation. Going down into your restricted and your unassigned, the total of your restricted, committed, and assigned, that's including all of the columns in six thirty eighteen, total seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And the unassigned, as you know, my goal has always been to pull that to about the four hundred thousand dollar range, which represents ten percent of our operating expenses. And I was taught in the workshops that I've been at with Vermont Vegas Cities and Towns that having a ten percent cushion is a safe place to be.
That's what the audience are also recommending.
Yes, yeah, we're, I'm comfortable with that. At the close of fiscal year six thirty two thousand seventeen, we had three hundred and fifty-six thousand. And so, we have more than that now, bringing the unassigned up to six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, we didn't realize it was gonna be that big, frankly, because there is a time in our budget, when we were monitoring our budget, that we were thinking we had actually overspent. So, we were both delighted and scratching our heads that the amount was that big. Seeing that it is and reflecting back on the fiscal year and the things that we accomplished, when you take out the two hundred and thirty-four thousand, that is the carryovers that we're asking for, plus the Walmart funds and the Centennial Celebration, the numbers start to get a little more reasonable, from my perspective. So, what we're recommending for the council is to approve the, all the sinking funds that we've set out in this sheet and to include the unassigned balance of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. So, that gives you some options for this coming year. And I wanna talk about that a little bit. One of the goals that I've heard from council members, and of course, I tabulate the goals that you have set out during the year, try to figure out how we can meet them and budget them in this coming year. And there is some excitement in the results of the VHB study. And I think we have a nice way to set some money aside to start to achieve some of those goals. And the way that we can do that, your, what our auditor has said is you can keep the funds in the unassigned until you have a little better grip on what might be the priority of the VHB study. And that would give Tom and myself and the mayor would be included, of course, in some engineering and some proposals, so we have a better idea of what the priorities are and how we're gonna achieve those goals. And also, that includes some grant recruitment because we have the RCDI grant, which is designed to help us achieve these infrastructure goals. So, one of the things that council could consider for the medium term is as we get closer to March, to the town meeting, there'll be an opportunity to make a proposal to the voters about how they might wanna spend those funds. And you could conceivably have as much as possibly two hundred thousand. And again, that's something we have to tease out. I'm just saying that number as an example. And that might bring us a little closer to actualizing some of the things that were presented in here. So, again...
One thing I wanna make sure we don't do is on the very first line under committed, that two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We wouldn't wanna, as a council, on my opinion, go and say, okay, we're gonna slash the tax rate for one year, 'cause then you gotta make it up the following year, depending on what the, depending on what the department head budgets come in and demand. Depending on what all the budgets come in at, I think will help us determine how much we wanna use, you know, towards to reduce the tax rate. But we don't wanna use it all up in one year because the following year, it could go back and bite us.
A sense of false expectation, a false sense of reality. And we found that out my first year here. There was funds that were set aside to do that and it did set it off, I can't remember the exact amount. I don't know if you can, Jim, maybe it was three cents. And what happens is your budget, that actual budget is still going up to two or three percent a year. And so, when you don't have those funds to offset, it can be a shock. And it sort of defeats, defeats the small incremental increases, which are more accepting than when you go from a big jump and that hurts people's feelings. And we realized that we had the appraisal and it was a busy year. It was a lot of feedback. So, we're trying to take that feedback and implement it into a plan that hopefully will get us somewhere, you know, start achieving some of these things.
Some of the reappraisal funds, that's money that comes in from the state, right, Jim?
Yeah.
They provide so much every year?
Yeah.
Into the reappraisal?
Yeah, about seventeen thousand a year.
So, that's from the state that helps for that, okay.
Questions from council members on this? Mrs. Schlemmer? Laura, on the restricted works, is Walmart funds?
Yeah.
Is this the first year that we've gotten that hundred thousand dollars?
We just received the second one hundred thousand dollar check and the council has designated thirty thousand dollars a year towards our, your downtown development designation. So, some of that has been restricted, committed.
Okay, so, the funds that we got this year, we received after the first of July?
Correct.
Okay, so this, what's shown here is the first installment of the six hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The second installment?
You've got about a hundred and seventy in there, 'cause we already paid first thirty thousand.
But we just got the second hundred thousand in the, the second hundred thousand for the...
It disappeared?
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday, I mean, Friday in that one.
Okay. Go ahead.
I know audits are really tricky and I'm certainly not an expert in these things, but I'm wondering if we were, if we didn't approve this, then what would happen?
It would delay generating this book and it would delay us generating our budget. Because what we do is we rely on this to formulate the numbers in our projects going forward. So, that, it would pose a little bit of a challenge for us to keep moving in our process. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council members?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one little, I think, question. I understand that there's money remaining in the Centennial Fund and it's restricted. I'm curious as to how much remains and what, at this point, are the restrictions? What can it be used for?
Um, there is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess it's less than nineteen thousand dollars. It's in that ballpark. And it can be used for beautification.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from council members? Yes, go ahead.
And if we've got a nineteen thousand dollar balance, why isn't it shown on the report?
Because it was expended in this fiscal year. So, it'll show, and when that says six thirty nineteen. We spent it down to zero.
Yeah, we spent after July first.
Yeah. So, your audit for six thirty two thousand eighteen will show zero because you see where it says eighty-two thousand dollars on six thirty two thousand seventeen? We've spent that. And then we spent, the funds used where it says two forty-four. Is that right, Jim? So, we spent, we spent eighty-two and, and...
One sixty-two?
No, I think it was the eighty-two in six thirty eighteen. Do you recall?
Yeah, the eighty-two is the original expense of the six thirty seventeen. Right. And we spent a total of two hundred and forty-four thousand so far. That leaves about nineteen, eighteen, nineteen thousand left out of what we took in.
So, that should show on your balance line?
Not as of six thirty eighteen. As of six thirty eighteen, it would show that the eighty-two has been spent. That's why it's showing zeros there.
'Cause the auditor had, what was his explanation? I had to be there, what was, he had something like...
It's gonna show because your funds came, your funds came, the second batch of money came in two thousand eighteen.
Eighteen, right.
So, it's gonna show, you're gonna have another line of Centennial Celebration at the close of this fiscal year, when we have it done a year from now.
'Cause this audit is for the fiscal seventeen eighteen year, is what we're doing. We're in the current eighteen nineteen year, that's why.
So, all we can show in this audit is that the eighty-two thousand is, is extended.
Okay. So, at the end of seventeen, that would be the end of seventeen, six thirty.
Correct, correct.
So, so it had eighty-two thousand. And then the one sixty-two was added.
Correct.
And, and we spent that too. So, the total spent was the sum of those two numbers there.
The total spent as of six thirty eighteen was the eighty-two thousand. And what's gonna show in the audit next year is that any real funds were extended. It is confusing.
I think the eighty-two thousand was spent as of July, June thirty seventeen.
Right.
The hundred and sixty-two thousand was spent as of June thirty eighteen. And next year, if we don't spend anything else, you'll show nineteen thousand. But I suspect that'd be gone before June thirty.
I'm just, I'm just getting a little confused because the numbers add up. It says funds used is two hundred and forty-four thousand. Now, that was used in twenty eighteen, right?
That's the total of the seventeen, June thirty, seventeen, June thirty eighteen. If you add those two together, it's two forty-four.
Right. And that's why the balance is zero at the end of six thirty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the balance doesn't show up here anyway? That's gonna be coming.
Yeah, the balance will be come when they do the audit next, next year. Well, by the time they do the audit, there won't be any money left because it'll all be spent before June thirty this year, I suspect.
You look confused, Mr. Schlemmer. 'Cause this number here originally had something in there and the auditor started saying, no, you can't have whatever because of these columns of fiscal years. So, I was thoroughly baffled at first, too.
And we won't see the thirty thousand that was taken out until we have the, the next budget for seven.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions from anyone regarding this? Do you have something, Mr. Johnson, you want to add?
No, not one.
Oh, I don't. Then...
You're happy.
You're happy.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
Then, would someone like to make a motion?
Can I use the word clear as mud?
I just have expressions here.
Your motion is clear as mud? Sounds good.
I'll make a motion. Do we approve the, what am I gonna call this sheet?
I'd call it the audit fund balance sheet.
The audit fund balance sheet?
As presented.
As presented.
So, a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'm sorry, I need to...
Made a second. Then discussion on the audit balance sheet. Hearing that, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a coffee?
Can you give one? I got a...
I have notes all over mine.
I do, too.
So, I'll use card you.
I'll send you a coffee.
Okay.
This'll end up being in our auditing.
We trust you.
But I'll be enough to...
I'm a great maker. Okay, the next item? Bids for dump truck, truck dump body and body sander. Public Works comes here. And we did receive, we did receive a memo for the bids. And you wanted to just give a little explanation for everyone?
We sent out two bids. We got two back. There's only two businesses in Vermont that put bodies, plows, and sanders on these dump trucks. As I broke out the two different bids, we looked heavily at the low bid and to make sure that everything met our spec, which it did. In the process, we actually made a few changes to it to better the truck. And they were still a lower bid in the end, by a substantial amount.
So, the one that Tom was recommending is from Viking Sibs USA in Williston. And the total amount would be forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
And you have those funds?
We have those funds. The truck's already on order. We always do our dump trucks, two separate bids, cab and chassis. The truck's been on order. We shouldn't, we probably won't see that till sometime around the first of the year. But, wanna get this, this portion of it going, too. As with the next bid, it'd be the same thing. We'd just be purchasing the cab and chassis.
So, I would entertain a motion to accept the bid for forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty for the dump body plow sander from Viking Sibs, Sibs, Syves, Syves Sibs, out of Williston, Vermont. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded, discussion. No discussion, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next audit of bids. The next was a bid for a five fifty, F, F five fifty, one and a half ton cab and chassis, two thousand nineteen. And it looks like we had one bid?
Correct.
From Hayes Ford?
Most of the dealers have been saying that they actually are ramping up for the, well, with GM and all those, it'd be fifty-five hundreds instead of the five fifties, but nobody currently has any built. We would really like to replace this truck fairly soon. And as is ordering it now, we probably won't receive the truck for probably two, three months anyways, but we don't wanna wait a year for a truck.
So, the exact is a two thousand nineteen F five fifty, four-wheel drive, six-point-seven-liter diesel, regular cab chassis, seven-year, a hundred thousand mile, premium care, for a total of fifty-five thousand, four thirty-two, thirty-nine.
As I said with the other truck, this one would need to be equipped with a plow and a dump body of some sort. We're looking at different options for a dump body, but I would be coming back to you at a later date with that bid.
Now, the older, older vehicles, to be sell those, to try to get rid of them? They're probably so worn out that no one even wants to...
Sometimes the rec department gets them.
I say you probably can't even give them away, except for the rec department.
Somebody has dibs on it. Although truck is in pretty rough shape. We just put a bunch of money into it just to keep it on the road, to get re-inspected.
True, it's a tougher inspection process.
Again, if I, if I hand it down to another department, that just means we're still working on it.
And it is a lot tougher than any vehicle, whether it's a city vehicle or your own personal, they're gonna be inspected now.
Yes, it is.
And so, alright, any other questions for Tom on this? Then I would also entertain a motion to accept the bid from Hayes Ford for fifty-five thousand, four thirty-two, thirty-nine. Which we do have the plans for. Okay, I will make that motion then, Mr. Mayor. A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, discussion on that motion. Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Hey, no, Mr. Burner, can we go back to two horses and a roller?
You mean like the old postcard picture?
You don't mind walking.
Okay. Moving on to new business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I've got a request for Niles funds. You pass that down, take a gander at it. It meets all the qualifications.
So we would need a motion for the Niles fund request.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second to approve the Niles fund request?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Any other new business?
No, that's all I've got.
Any new business?
New business?
I don't have any. New business? New business? Moving on, old business, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, this is old news. Don't forget to vote.
You have it all ready.
Tell everybody, don't forget to vote this time.
There's enough signs out there. Any old business?
Yes. The Doc Committee has finished. I haven't had a chance to review it, but I just have finalized the form, which hopefully is agreeable to everybody.
We'll have it on the next agenda? Oh.
Or December third possibly.
Or December third, depending on the next, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Look at that, copies out, everybody.
The rest of the council members too.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it, I just saw it in my email before I came out.
Right.
Any other old business? Old business?
Yes, I do. I know we've spent a lot of time on it over the last couple of meetings, but I would like to revisit our October fifteenth meeting when the council made the decision to stop taking leachate. I think we have made, as a council, a lot of strides toward transparency and listening to the public and making sure that we have a process and follow the rules of procedure where we, as a council, have enough time to think about things before we vote on them. And also we give the full public the opportunity to give input on any future decisions that we're going to make. I regret that I was not at the meeting three weeks ago because I was ill. And I was very shocked to find that there was no vote warned on the agenda of that meeting. The agenda very simply said, "Presentation by Robert Winott, of Men from Agar Conservation and Charlie Pronto from John." So there was no indication that there would be a vote taken. And I feel that that goes against our, our own rules and against the Secretary of State guidelines and the Vermont League of City and Towns advice. Our own rules of procedure say that "All business shall be conducted in the same order as it appears on the noticed agenda, except that any additions or deletion from the noticed agenda must be made as the first act of business at the meeting. No additions to or deletions from the agenda shall be considered once the first act of business at the meeting has commenced." I, I thought a lot about this whole issue, actually three separate issues that we've been discussing. Number one being the leachate, number two being the Casella landfill expansion, and number three, the unlined portion of the landfill. And those are three very distinct issues. And the, I think the most pressing, pressing one that people felt needed to be addressed immediately was obviously the leachate. And obviously you've all felt compelled enough to take action on that. I would like to suggest that we reconsider taking that action since it didn't follow best practice and it wasn't warned. And personally, I don't think that we've heard everything that we need to hear about leachate and the, the risks or non-risk of it. I attended the, the open house at the wastewater treatment plant on Saturday. And Pedro gave me a very nice door and everyone else who was there. And I learned a lot about the operations, about how many gallons flow through there in a day. I've also taken a tour of Casella and learned much more about their processes and their technology. And even after being exposed to a wealth of information, I'm, I'm not a technical expert. And I feel that until we know more, that it's a little bit premature to make a decision that may or may not be impacting the health of our lake and that really affects us financially as a city. That's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year in income. Not that that's the most important thing, but I think that is something to consider. That's a pretty, pretty big decision to make without it being.
First of all, the word vote does not have to be on the agenda. I spoke, I had, actually I had Mr. Johnson, he spoke with the head attorney for the VLCT. And you do not leave the word vote on an agenda.
But in the spirit of transparency.
We had two full meetings discussing it. We had two full meetings here with the council, long meetings, discussing it. And we had a lot of information sent to us. And so the council felt that, and it was even asked if they wanted to delay the vote. Mr. Schnet asked the question. And nobody wanted to delay it. But you do not have to have the word vote on the agenda. I can tell you that from a legal point of view, from the, the head lawyer, Garrett Baxter, that he spoke with on my behalf.
Called down there, the emergency class just came up. And Garrett, who's the head attorney for VLCT, said, "There's no statutory reform that that would be on the, on the issue. And there's no case law that can, can back it up at this point." That's what he told me.
Well, I understand that.
You can take it from there.
The council, let me just say, the council at the time felt that they wanted to take a stand. And so they made a motion and it was seconded to do what they did at the time. And so I don't think there was anything hidden, there was no lack of transparency. The meetings were, we had two full meetings. The first meeting was presented, Casella folks were here. The second meeting, when Mr. Benoist from Canada came, Casella was here also. And they answered questions at both meetings, both sides did. And so the biggest issue, I'll tell me personally, is the unknown with that new chemical. That is really truly an unknown. It's an unknown with the state, because if you read the permit, they, the permit even says that the state in Casella has to come up with testing for that, or the ability to test for it. Because it's such new, it's such a new chemical. And that's the unknown. And that's what changed my mind as far as wanting to act quickly. Because we saw what happened in Bennington. We saw what happened to their drinking water down there from PFOAs. And that's why I just felt weird, we're going into this lake from our treatment plant. The treatment plant works great on everything. It may work great on this, but it's an unknown. And the motion was that if it's, if it comes back to the council, the exact motion was, if, if it's determined completely safe, we'll take it again. You know? And so, once the state determines and things like that. But it's still an unknown, it truly is. And if you look, um. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, this is what I was going to say. I just lost my train of thought. So that's where the council that night, I know other members can speak if they wish.
And you pretty much summed it up.
Well, that isn't entirely my point. And first, let me clarify, I did not mean to suggest that there was anything hidden at all. I understand that there was no intention of, of having a vote that night until it just presented itself. And now I lost my train of thought, so hopefully you found yours. Because I know I haven't, oh, Bennington is totally unrelated to wastewater treatment. That had nothing to do with their PFOA.
But still, it's PFOAs in the water, in their water wells and wells.
Yes, but that came from a certain contaminant that we don't have.
But we don't know that. I mean, they, they proven PFOAs in the leachate.
And the groundwater.
And the groundwater and the unlined. And that was another thing that.
Casella, I mean, sorry, Casella doesn't even.
But the unlined landfill is a big issue too, is that speaking with someone twenty years ago, they were supposed to deal with it twenty years ago, Casella, the, the unlined landfill. And now they want to wait another twenty years. So it's going to be like forty years before they're even dealing with the unlined landfill. Because they were supposed to have dealt with it by now. And that was started twenty years ago. And they haven't. And now this next permit expansion, this expansion basically says they don't have to deal with it for another twenty years. Which, that's, that's a bother too.
And I understand those different issues being in, in different containers, so to speak. My main concern really is that, I really do feel that we've made a lot of strides toward being more transparent and more considerate of taking time to think and allowing the public to comment. And this unfortunately wasn't one of those times. And it, it was a really big decision. And I would caution us to make sure we follow the, the spirit of our rules. Not necessarily the letter of the law. I understand it doesn't, vote isn't required on the agenda, but I feel like, as a council, we've moved toward never having an unworn vote. And I'm, I'm disappointed that that happened.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
I've got nothing. Do you have any old business?
Well, I'm not sure. Would it be appropriate to discuss the minutes for the voter agreement? If I've got questions? Or yes. I just, I just need clarification.
I don't know if it, as long as the mayor says it's good.
I mean, the minutes right here?
Yes. There were just a couple of things.
Oh, yeah, we can, I guess.
More than other things. No, I just want clarification on. The first line where it says, "Fire safety and cooking on the dock," is that really meant to say on the dock? Or on the boats?
On the boats, at the dock.
I think it says on the dock or in the birthing area, or on boats in the birthing area.
Okay, that goes, that's further down. Which, I had a question about that too. It says that there's a prohibition against the use of any form of abaches, charcoal, wood, or gas type portable cooking equipment, except in specifically off-ways areas that are not on the docks, on boats in the birthing area, or near flammables.
Oh, these are really.
Exactly.
If I'm reading that correctly, it says you can have this going on near a flammable?
It says, it's not authorized on the docks, in the birthing areas, or near the flammable, but it is authorized in permitted areas. So an example of a permitted area would be like the pavilion area where the cooking tables are on land. So.
But that's not, it's not the flow of the wording.
I think I took the warning exactly from the NFPA or whatever the.
Because basically it says that there's a prohibition against all those.
Yeah.
Except in.
Except in authorized.
Authorized areas, so not on the docks. And on boats in birthing area and near flammables.
So I think it's not, and not on the dock, not on birthing, not in birthing areas, and not near flammables. I think it was.
So the only place left is a pavilion on the dock.
So we can put and not in, the words and not in front of those, and that would make it more clear. I pulled that language right from the.
Because I read that over and over again.
I can, I can see how you do it.
The way my mind operates is a lot different than most people. And I just kept coming up with, you could do this near flammable.
Don't cook on your, don't cook over there on the way, and go over here next to the gas pump for the flammables. So I, we, we, we are shooting for the optimum clarification, so I will add.
Thank you.
That's just the minutes, right? That's not, we're coming up with this. This is going to be the final.
But I did have that, those, that exact line, the exact code in the agreement, so I will.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to really, the, the committee, the committee hasn't had a chance to look. Well, no, this is, this went to the committee. This went to the committee to review, not the council, only because we want to make sure it reflects what the committee decided.
We didn't want to pull the curtain off for the council quite yet, and get everyone's thoughts.
And basically.
I'm a guy who grabbed what could happen.
And basically the birthing area would be the slips and the mooring areas.
Yeah, so basically somebody who's a smarty pants couldn't like take their string off the dock and then cook on their grill in their slip, you know? They would have to tootle out.
Oh, you don't like my idea of kind of float the boat out and cook?
Well, really Dennis, it's just a slip, so mooring areas is a different.
Yeah.
That's a different thing altogether.
So. Down on weeds. Equipment would be available for the city to use so we could internally. Equipment would be available that would allow weed harvesting internally instead of contracting to work out. So do we have that equipment, or would we have to rent it from somewhere?
I think that was in edit, originally it said ideally, equipment would be available to, and I think somewhere along that got edited, or maybe I forgot.
But you're reflecting what the committee talked about in these minutes.
Yeah.
It's rarely for the committee, I think, where I think about it, to, 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 you know, fix the minutes.
Yes.
I think it needs to go before the committee. I do, I think it needs to go before the committee to fix the minutes.
Okay, but it's really not a correction of the minutes I really want to add. It's just that I want to make sure that it's clear in my mind before it ends up on here.
Yeah, no, what was, what the conversation that happened amongst the committee was, wouldn't it be nice if we had our own weed harvester instead of contracting it out and leaving to someone else? Would it be feasible for us to have our own piece of equipment that maybe then we could contract that to other lakes to help, you know, pay for it? And that's obviously a larger, you know, thing. But that was just some conversation. So no, we don't currently have a piece of equipment that would work for that, but we just had some discussion about maybe it would be feasible or worth it for the city to have their own.
Okay, so before I go on anything else, and would you prefer that I wait till this comes out and we can change that?
I'm happy answering questions, but that'll.
I think, I think it'd be better if the committee went through all this and. That's just me, I mean.
I can do it, it doesn't matter to me.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking, committee hasn't.
I can wait for that to come out and then we can change that.
I think that might be better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it might be better because the committee hasn't had a chance to review this. I can tell you with regard to cooking, even the fire chief changed his mind once he got into the National Fire Code, which he found, the first estate fire marshal said, "Yeah, within so many feet." But then the state fire marshal and the fire chief got to reading the National Fire Code, which they, the state's supposed to follow, and then we follow. So that would not allow any outside cooking anywhere on that facility, unless you're using your little stove inside the boat.
All right, then I'll, I'll wait till we have that formed.
Oh, okay. Workable.
Although, it's a good point. We, I made a recommendation that maybe the city should look to purchasing a weed harvester. Not only for the docks, with the Newport Marina, the beach, South Bay, which is so choked that they used to have water skiing, but now because of the weeds, they don't, they don't have that. And I, I'm sure it'll be a huge investment. However, once we have that, if, you know, maybe rent it or lease it to Newport Center to work out a whole book plan or.
You know, we did, I think it was in two thousand sixteen, we applied for a USDA grant for an aquatic nuisance harvester. We were declined on that. It doesn't mean we couldn't try it again.
You don't ballpark very well, I say.
Well, I want to say it was, I want, I believe it was in the seventies or eighties.
Yeah, I think so.
You do? Because the grant was going to assume a nice amount of that. We were still going to have to come up with a cash match, which we expect. I still have the folder on my, in my, I can grab it.
Might be something we look into again.
Almost like a truck for public works?
An excavator or a skid steer, right? We've had good luck in a dispatch center. We've had good luck with USDA grants. And we're talking about filing another one for some replacement radios for the police department, because each radio is in the six thousand dollar range. So the deadlines in December will probably come with a, you have to have a request to the city council that might actually be on the next agenda. So another USDA grant opportunity. It's the, it's the community facilities applications, and they're due in mid-December.
Especially since we're moving our, our focus to more recreational.
Yeah. No, the timing is good.
It would be beautiful to say we have a lake that's virtually weed-free. In Newport.
Weed-free would be.
In the dock area.
In the dock area.
Talking about the lake, right?
By James Paul. He asked at the end of the rant.
Any old business? Any old business?
Coming into budget season, so my goal is to be able to start the presentations on the nineteenth. And what we've done historically is set up special meetings from time to time, just for the purpose of budget review. So my goal is that you're going to have your initial packets on the nineteenth and we'll start scheduling. You're going to have other things on the agendas as well, so you won't have a lot of time. And that's why scheduling a special meeting where you can focus just on that is really valuable. And that's why scheduling a special meeting where you can focus just on that was really valuable. Our pattern in the past is I put them up on the boards, we go through it. We start with the hopes and wishes and desires. And we're going to meet with the mayor one more time before we go live with you guys to get an idea of what's feasible. I don't see any surprises at this particular point. What I'm seeing is a budget that's going to look very similar to the last budget. And we may even be able to do level funded with it, with the commitments that we just made. So I'm feeling a little bit optimistic about the budget, frankly. So that's coming up. The other thing I wanted to mention is a heartfelt kudos and thank you to Pedro Grandin, who's here for running an incredible open house of the wastewater treatment plant on Saturday. And he ended up doing three tours, I think, three tours. First one was the largest. And we had a total of about forty people, we'd say we had more than forty. The rain was intense. And people were hanging on Pedro's every word. They didn't even leave without pouring rain.
So you were out in the rain? You took him on the same tour you took Mr. Schnett and I?
The week, they got a better one. You weren't in a hurry, mayor, so we...
No, we weren't in a hurry. We had a...
You said you had to get that off the Aetion there and that, so...
No, we had a route for how long? For a long time.
I was a little late to work.
One of you said you had to get some of yourself.
That was him.
All right. Come back, come back and we'll give you the better tour.
So we received some thank you notes from some of the people that were there. They didn't realize how intense and thorough it was. And the, the equivalent, the Tom Bernier equivalent for the city of Sherbrooke.
Did he make it?
Yes, and the Pedro Grandin equivalent from Sherbrooke were there. So it was really neat to hear their conversation about the depth and breadth of what goes on there. And Michelle Seer kept smiling going, "Well, he really knows his stuff." I was like, "You're not hiring him." But he, it was great. I was really proud of Pedro.
Picture our, picture I was multiplying, how much for Sherbrooke?
Oh, my God.
Twenty million gallons a day.
Sherbrooke, you gotta say, it's going to be.
Yeah, and they've invited, they've invited us to go up and see that. So I'm hopeful that that, that will happen. It was, it was very informative. So just a kudos to those guys for, for pulling off a really beautiful event. And to reiterate, if folks want to go and have a tour, Pedro was a phone call away. Three, three, four.
They're all applying, calling now.
A little, a little advance notice.
Plant's changed.
Yeah.
Our process has changed. We've been working with, with Paul Orlander and all that. So we've changed a lot of the process of the plant. So we're handling stuff a lot differently. That plant in the seventies was built to handle a certain amount of industrial because of the hutch plant. So that plant gives us a lot of flexibility, you know, on how to run it differently and do things with it. So it's capable of doing a lot. And, you know, with all the upgrades you've done, part of me getting air and then we're doing air and that, it's changed its outlook of what it can do and what it can't do. So, you know, we give a plant a chance, it does do a good job.
So anybody who wants to visit it, get a tour, give Pedro a call. It'd be really, really good to do.
Yeah, I need to confirm, so what we did with the Aetion tanks has made a huge difference in the operation. I'm very proud of what's going on with it right now. State says if our humidity is ten or less, it's great. We've been running in the one and twos.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, then the next council meeting will be Monday, November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, six thirty PM. You need a motion to adjourn at eight thirty.
Soon, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?